Make sure you mention again, we all gave it to you.
Okay.
Because there's a lot of screaming.
Yeah, there is.
And I mean, uh, and that's why I'm against all of them.
Yeah.
I mean, that's always been my argument.
Right.
If you give it to one, somebody's jealous.
Yeah.
Cameron's raising all kinds of oil, you know, and.
Did you, I found.
About somebody, when did we say that? One of the commissioners.
Is that earlier agenda from the DDA or whatever?
It is here, right?
Is it one of these commissioners?
Mm-hmm.
But did they get reimbursed from the sale?
So.
You can turn it back though.
When you're.
Jeff Johnson? No, Anderson. What about him now?
I guess he.
Yeah.
Loaned from the DDA in that building for Kevin Evans. Never paid him.
Jeff had that? We can ask him.
I didn't even look at it myself.
I think all them loans were paid back though.
They paid them so they could.
I, I can't say because I don't know.
Yeah, I haven't looked at it.
I don't have any idea. Because I don't remember, in my history, I don't have.
That's why the rules are now, that you have to spend your money first before you can even apply.
Well, we need to emphasize the DDA. Because this, you know, if we're gonna envelop that building into the DDA, it's not a question either.
Right, and I had mentioned that to you last night. It's time, gentlemen, you guys ready? Ready? All right, welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Buchanan City Commission, Monday, September ninth, two thousand twenty-four. We have recognition tonight. For the Constitution Week, I'm gonna read this to everyone if you have a moment. Whereas September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four marks the two hundred and thirty-seventh anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document in its memorable anniversary into the patriotic celebrations which will commensurate commemorate the occasion. Public Law nine fifteen guarantees issuing of proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September sixteenth through the twentieth of, as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Mark Whedon, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Buchanan, do hereby proclaim the week of September sixteenth through the twentieth as Constitution Week. And ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the farmers, framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city to the fix this ninth day of September of the year of our Lord, two thousand twenty-four.
And I think we have Tiffany Dash here from Rebecca Dewey Chapter accepting the proclamation from Mayor Whedon.
And you're gonna have the mayor in both seats. So I apologize.
Okay, sorry to make everybody stand back. Can you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Yeah, roll call, please.
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Present.
Swem?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Okay, I will take a motion to approve the amended agenda before us.
Yeah, I move to, well, don't we have to amend this? Oh.
Yeah, it's.
Amend and approve, yeah.
Yeah.
I move to approve the amended agenda.
Do you have support?
Uh, this is money I'll support.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Carries?
Okay, now, now we will take public comments. Please keep your comments to three minutes. State your name for the record at the podium before us. Agenda items only.
Gotta be faster, Beth.
Norma was ready.
Yes, she is. Norma Ferris, three zero four North Oak Street. I would like better definition for items on this agenda. Community Development, one and two. And, um, nine, one and two. That's the same thing. Smack, I would like to understand this better and why do we need a new parking lot with our streets looking like they do?
Thanks, Norma.
Beth Murphy, one eleven Lake Street. Um, I just wanna speak for a second about the three individuals that came and interviewed for the commission. Place on the commission. I said that all wrong, didn't I? Tony Hauser has only been in Buchanan four years. And you would think after four years that not very many people would know a person that's only been here for four years. But this individual has been out and about. He's volunteered for numerous committees and boards in the city and um, has done his best to learn people's names, to learn what they do, to learn what the different organizations do. He really wants to be a part of what's going on, the improvements that we see in town, um, the surprises that come every now and then from Richard Murphy's office that you go out and you hear it and you think, oh, that's great that that's gonna happen in town. I met Tony first at Pierce Mill. It was four years ago. He came in with his wife Tiffany and Lila, his daughter, who at the time was four, four and a half. Lila came up to the counter I was standing behind and held out her hand to shake my hand and introduce herself. And I think that that says an awful lot for the character of the parents. And I have to say particularly if Tony, because that's who I'm talking about. I just think that, that he, he has great ideas, he has a great amount of energy. I think he would be great on the commission. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth.
Oh, wait, do I have a couple more minutes?
I'll give you one more minute.
One more minute, okay, Raquel. Raquel over here came up and interviewed. And when she walked out of this door back here and she walked up to the chair, I looked at her and I thought, oh, for heaven's sakes, she looks like a teenager. She's twenty-two. And this girl got up and with such finesse, she answered the questions that you guys gave her. She was, she was so well composed and spoke so well. If I were your mom or grandma, I would be so proud. You are, I just have to give you a hand, you're great. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Jerry Flinner, one six four eight five, Ryan Nielsen. I could just say ditto, I guess, because, again, I think it's great that Raquel uh, wants to get active. I would encourage her to stay trying to get active in this great community, as you put it. But I would, I would give my support for Tony. He's been in a lot of, uh, groups that I've been involved with, he's very active. Tries to get, know what's going on, he does a lot of research before he talks, so if it was me, I'd give my vote to Tony. But, thank you, Raquel.
Thanks, Jerry.
Jeanie Harris, three twenty Bluff Street. I'm up here to show support for Tony Hauser. As Beth stated, you know, he's involved in a lot. He's, I think, the planning commission already, and I serve on the senior center board with him. And he's been on there for maybe about a year now. And he's really a great asset to our board. And I know, you know, what he does around the community, how he tries to help people in different organizations. So I really feel that Tony would be a great asset to the city commission. Every meeting I come to, he has been here. So apparently he has an interest, he has that passion for the city and what's going on in the city. So I would just like to recommend Tony Hauser for city commissioner.
Thank you, Jeanie. Okay, I don't see any other public comments. We'll take a motion for the consent agenda.
I also move.
Is there support?
This money I'll, this money I'll support.
Roll call, please.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we have no scheduled matters from the floor. Next up, Rich Murphy, Community Development Report.
Good evening, I'll be efficient, it looks like I have a lot, but it's pretty straightforward. First thing is, Boone Labs called me Friday and asked for their, their renewal to be pulled from tonight's agenda. They're discussing some business decisions. And they will get back in touch with me this week on what their plans are for renewal. It may have to do with whether they will continue with a medical license or not. But I, instead of kind of bringing them up here, and I just said, look, we'll press pause. When you make your final decision, come back and we'll bring you to the next agenda. So, we don't have to, uh.
Can I have a motion to postpone that, please?
When did you know that?
Friday.
I'll move to postpone.
Thank you.
Support. Roll call, please.
Swem?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, second item. You'll remember that in two thousand twenty-three, you approved a contract with Point Blue. This is actually Shay Muller, he was here tonight from Point Blue, working with Mark Seaman as well to develop demolition specifications for one eleven railroad. We did develop those specifications. And under, part of the contract, we did pay Point Blue for that work. We submitted what I thought was a very competitive grant application, we did not get the grant. Second round has come up now. And so in our discussions with the county, we have secured, what they're telling us is a guaranteed grant of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the demolition of the old feed mill. But, uh, we wanna approach it a little differently because we wanna itemize each parcel, e- each demolition, if you will. Our last bid, we went all, all in and it came back as one bid. Now we think if we can itemize the specifications, we can use the dollars, the two hundred and twenty thousand, more efficiently and very likely get everything on the one eleven parcel torn down and ready for redevelopment. So, uh, doing those re, those bid specifications again costs money. So I prepared kind of a quick reference sheet in front of you. We paid them for the work, um, in two thousand twenty-three for the original bid. We never paid them for task three or four because we never got to that demolition, uh, which is the construction, uh, phase activities and the construction management. So those two items just moved down in the contract. But now we, we do have to pay them, which is the delta difference for the rebid of the specification. So, uh, there's a delta difference of eight thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. That's the revised contract. Tim and I have been, uh, reviewing and working on this last, uh, a couple weeks. So it's finally ready and we can proceed with the, the rebid of, of the job. Hopefully get a, maybe a bit more favorable numbers and, and itemization where we could, uh, more efficiently use the grant money.
Do we know where we're gonna get the money?
Well, it's, uh, in the next several months, I would say, um, is, it's, what my understanding is the money is at the county land bank. And so we're just waiting for the bid resp, resp specifications, the bid itself. And a couple, like, some minor survey work that we did. And then we could submit the application in the county, again, the county, my counterpart, Katie Montoya at the county, has told Shay and me on various occasions that this, this is a guaranteed, uh, grant amount. So I would say, without tying to a date, the timeline's kind of in our court.
That's only two hundred and twenty thousand dollars and the bid was five hundred, wasn't it?
Yeah, I would have.
Last time?
But that included the silos.
Right.
That included everything. Well, we're including everything, even though we're doing it incrementally.
But we were trying to be smarter about it now. We think that two twenty, we'll be able to do the feed mill and the outbuilding and the demo of the main one eleven railroad parcel, that's our strategy at this point.
One eleven, is that the?
The actual Purina Mill.
Okay, yeah, I got.
The old greenhouse.
Yeah.
The various.
Plus the tire shop as well.
Okay, and there.
So everything but the silos?
Sounds like it.
Elevators.
Yeah.
Maybe you can start the conversation on those silos again, too.
Well, I mean, we missed an opportunity, so there's no sense in hashing that.
Yeah.
But.
Silos are still there, they'll be in a separate parcel. We carved off the silos in a separate parcel. So we can still seek grant money for that. But we can proceed on the, what I think the main opportunity, which is the one eleven railroad parcel.
Right, makes sense.
Big win.
Do we look outside of southwest Michigan for contractors? Because South Bend tore down a whole apartment complex for a half a million dollars. And I talked to her.
Didn't we have a bid out of Indiana?
Or a low bid, I should say, was from Indiana.
Yeah. Gentry, I believe it was, yes.
So why is it so much more expensive than tearing down almost ten apartment buildings? I mean, we were at a half a million dollars and they tore that whole apartment complex just south of the baseball stadium down there, got tore down for just about the same amount of money.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, we talked about this quite a bit, but the silos are, uh, a different type of category of demolition. It requires crane operation, railroad Amtrak permit. Uh, so that typically may be a higher cost item in a bundled bid. If we pull that out, we might be able to get a more, a smaller firm to give a more reasonable price.
Does it have anything to do with the monitoring process that you guys are involved in on a continuous basis on that property? Does that involve an additional cost or higher cost because of that?
Are you talking about tire shop?
Yes, correct.
Uh, it will not, I mean, it'll actually help the remediation of that property if that building's gone. But if it's not, we can still do what we need to do to, uh, make it, uh, you know, revitalize.
How much is it gonna cost us to get permission from the railroad to tear down something they're demanding we tear down?
Well, it's a permitting issue.
Well, I know, but a permit's gonna cost.
We know the cost was at least four hundred thousand dollars to, if you included it before. And some bids were over a million to two million, so.
No, I understand what the bids are. But we have to apply for a permit from the railroad company.
If we do the silos. If we do the silos, right, and then at that time.
I mean, we're gonna do them in the future, that's why I'm asking now.
Right, but we can plan for that.
It's just a money thing.
We don't have enough money to do everything.
We could take a bite out of the.
So you don't know how much the permits would cost us to tear down the silos?
I think the permits are not going to be the obstacle, it's more timing on getting through the railroad's red tape.
Yeah. Yeah, I make, that's. I would say it's accurate.
Yeah, I know, I understand, I know, I know.
And hopefully it's a situation, right, where we can get a site developed. And now that's just one more, you know, one less thing that's preventing us from completing the project. And we might have a smaller chunk that we can set aside dollars for in the future and take that on. Who knows what'll be available then, but at least we can get something started now that we all deemed a priority back in March at our budgeting session.
You know, I, I, I understand all that, and I'm trying to see the regulations is what's gonna cost us to tear them silos down. It's nothing else, it's just regulations.
Well, and the, and the concrete, there's massive amounts of concrete that caused that bid to jump.
As an FYI, Gentry's bid item, uh, just for the permit work was twelve thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
There you go. Okay.
Yeah, I mean Shay, Shay has been on these calls with me every time. You know, we, the county is telling us they're guaranteed funds, but in our business, they're not guaranteed until they're in our bank account, right? So I just wanna caveat that as well.
No, I think we're moving in the right direction, so I'll move to approve the specifications and construction management for demolition proposal from Point Blue at a proposed amount of twenty-five thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars.
Do I have support?
This is money I'll support.
I do have one more question. There's a lot of small companies out there. They can't do it on their own, but they'd like to lump together to try to do some of these jobs. Is there any way we can make it perfectly clear for them to try to do that?
Absolutely. I guess a good thing about what we're gonna be doing in this next phase, um, it's not as complicated as it was gonna be with the silos, so I, I think they can do this stuff without a crane and, um, which would open it up, I think, to more companies that would, uh, that their, uh, areas of expertise.
Yeah, I'm sure the railroad required some kind of bond and things like that, that's probably cost prohibitive to a small operation.
One of the cranes, what? Fifteen hundred bucks an hour or something, so.
Maybe the operator, the operator might cost that.
For the first hour, anyhow.
Crane itself is a different price, I'm sure. All right, I got a motion to support.
You good, roll call, please.
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item, uh, several months ago, I received a call from a, uh, business investor in Buchanan who was looking at one of the guard checks for, uh, an ice cream, uh, concept, Haley Jones. Uh, we talked on the phone. Uh, she had a vision in her head and she was excited. And she asked me the question, if I implement this, uh, are there possible paths forward for a, a restaurant incentive grant? And I said, yes, I believe there is, we have a restaurant incentive grant, um, for various reasons. It's adjacent to the downtown area, it's in a building that's been vacant for forty years. It seeks to create vibrance for more pedestrian traffic in an area that needs it. Uh, I said, when you're, uh, you're, I know you're on a fast track, but when you're ready, I will bring it to the commission and advocate, advocate for you. She went on the fast track, um, and the rest is history. And, and the cones are good, if you haven't tried it, I highly recommend them. For me, a little too close to City Hall, though. But the, uh, the point is, is I, at our discussion, I think that the fact that there was a viable, possible grant path forward was a significant factor in Haley making the investment. And so I am, uh, advocating for you to approve this this evening. I know Haley has, uh, wants to present to you as well, so I will let her do that and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I did a PowerPoint, you guys can see those photos of how far it's came. I just have a sure thing, I'm gonna say, we embarked on this journey because we believe in Buchanan. By revitalizing a city park, we created a space where people don't just come for ice cream. They gather, stay and return. In the process, we've created twelve jobs with eight of them being Buchanan residents, seven of them went back to Buchanan High School this year. While we've had a successful year at the ice cream shop, we know there's still improvements to be made. That's all I got.
Thank you. Rich, can you just briefly, um, let the public know the, the previous grants that we've awarded in the city for this particular, uh, program?
Yeah, I, I think the first one we did, uh, was a facade grant for the Sweet Shop. We've done several facade grants, including, um, oh.
Union?
Union Coffee. We did restaurant grants for, uh, we did a facade grant for Lehman's across the street here. We did, uh, restaurant incentive for Buck Town Nutrition. We did, uh, facade grants for the incubator and, uh, the River St. Joe Restaurant Downtown.
I believe Ace Hardware or, um, Red Bud Hardware.
Yeah, Red Bud Hardware.
We're blending two different grants, but, yeah.
So we've done several. And, uh, you know, I think they're working, I mean, you know, based on this conversation. It doesn't seem like a lot of money, but when someone already believes in the vision and then you can add a little bit of push. I think I'm already talking to another restaurant downtown, uh, potentially, uh, who has closed on a building on Main Street. And their first question out of their mouth is, is there a grant? Is there a restaurant grant? And I, I said the same thing, like, if you have the vision, if you spend the money, if you have the wherewithal, I, and you make the impact, I will advocate for you to the commission because this is exactly why we have these programs. So, uh, now there's ice cream, um, in a, in an area that's really been activated. I mean, it, it's remarkable that you see people walking over there on a daily basis. So, I mean, that's what we want. We wanna, um, move traffic and energy around downtown, stretch the downtown if we can. Uh, so, uh, you know, in this case, it was a significant investment, you know, just here on, on Haley, Haley's, uh, paid invoices, well over thirty thousand dollars. So, uh, you need seventeen to get to ten, sixty percent. So, um, you know, my, my, um, request is, I would ask you to consider to approve, approve this and, um, improve projects like this in the future, because this is why we're, we have the program.
I, I think it's important for any of the public listening that, you know, this is a reimbursable grant. So the business owner has to have their money into the project first. You know, they can't just take a grant money and spend it on how they want, they have to document how it happened. This request is in the spirit of the grant. And these grants have three-year clawback periods to where, you know, that business needs to remain in Buchanan and operating in Buchanan. Or, you know, they are subject to repaying it. And it's important, we wanna invest in businesses that are gonna stay here and operate here, and that's why we have this funding. And we've historically funded this through a portion of our cannabis excise tax. And that's where we've put money to the side from. So I, I think it's in the spirit of that and I'll move to approve the restaurant incentive grant for Chunk's Ice Cream in the full amount of the ten thousand dollars.
Do we have support?
Is this is money and I'll support?
Further discussion?
I have a problem because every one of the other names that you said presented this to us. And then we authorized it, and then they brought us the receipts, or it was done prior to all this work being done. I don't like the way this is written in the sense that it's not C three. I don't like the idea that as a commission, you're making us select and choose. I don't like it at all. And I just wanted to say, that's why I'm gonna vote no, because I don't really particularly care for corporate welfare. But that's just my personal beliefs, so.
I, I think Dan has his opinion, it's worded the way it is to allow the commission flexibility. Where we see the investment making the greatest impact on the community, so I respect his opinion, though.
But it's, it creates, it's not tight enough, it is not tight enough. Because if it was more specific, we don't need leniency, we don't need to make the decision. If they fulfill the criteria of what we write for the grant, there's no question. But with having all these questions about whether they fall into the category of getting the money or not, makes it very selective and makes it look like the good old boy club. And that's the only statement I'm gonna make about it.
That's fair opinion.
Fair. Good? Roll call, please.
Bianski?
No.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is just a heads up, uh, and an update on the CDBG program. You're aware that we did, uh, enter into our agreement with our third-party administrator, Sonia Vitelli. Uh, we have begun, uh, reviewing applications for home repair and demolition. Sonia has brought up to us that there are some policies that are required that the city approve that are tied to CDBG practice. Tim and I are in the process of reviewing these policies. Some of them, I think we already have, uh, on a smaller threshold, but I think I told you with CDBG, there's just, there's some paperwork that we have to take care of. If you use that money, there's some rules. So, Tim and I have a meeting tomorrow, uh, where we're gonna walk through this information so that we understand why and what we have to do. And then we will likely, uh, be bringing this forward at, at an upcoming meeting to you uh, with Sonia Vitelli here, that as the expert, she can speak to that. So I just wanted you to know that, you know, we're active on the CDBG front, um, and, um, that we'll be coming to you, it's more of a heads up.
Is this neighborhood only or is this citywide?
The, the language in the, uh, application is targeted towards the north side neighborhood. If, if there's, we, we don't get enough, we're already getting a lot of applications from the north side. So, uh, that was the intent all along with the home repair and demolition. So we are focusing on a targeted area that is best practice in, uh, in type of, these type of redevelopment. That is best practice in, uh, in type of, these type of redevelopment strategies, where you try to take a smaller geographic area and really put a punch into it, it's kinda like why we're doing the facade and restaurant, so.
I think Niles just authorized theirs on the, the Third Street Corridor, and the, I won't say the Fifth Street Corridor, primarily.
And they've been on, I think it's like around two or three, because they've been doing it for years.
At least, yeah, yeah, it's been out there for years.
Yeah. So, uh, I don't need any approvals on that, but I will be coming to you with more information on that. Uh, next item, um, I am responding on the request to look into the, uh, potential DDA path forward for the city of Buchanan. So I have, uh, been investigating several possible paths forward, um, and I, there is, in my due diligence, one path that I think is the most viable, that I'll describe in a minute. The, all along, I've said the DDA is a tool in the toolbox, uh, but it's not an immediate cure-all. It's something that, it's a long-term investment, it takes people, time, money, uh, you need to wait for money to accrue. There's a setup time, um, so, uh, the, the viable path I see forward, I wanna share with you, is to partner with the county, uh, my counterpart, Dan Fetti, uh, the Community Development Director for the County, Bering County. Had a very good call with him last week, um, Dan and I have a very good working relationship. He's written about twelve of these plans, um, most recently, uh, St. Joe and Water of Lea, very recently. Um, Dan is willing to partner and work with us, uh, on the creation, um, if, if that is the kinda will of the leadership and the administration, um, so, um, but it, it's, it's gonna take time and money, and I, I just wanna set those expectations. So there, there's really two parts of a DDA, one is the creation, so it's all the statute tells you what you have to do. And there's a lot of notice requirements, uh, you have to, I, you have to notify the other taxing units. You have to do public meetings, public hearings, that alone can take four to five months. Um, you know, you have to create a board, et cetera, um, you need legal review, because there, there's actually ordinances tied to the creation of this. So the ordinance need to be reviewed, so that they're aligned with the statute, and that they can hold up in, in a, a league, in court, in the legal sense. Once you have done that step, uh, four to five months, there's really the important part, which is the development plan. So you have to create a development plan, so we have to talk about goals and action items and redevelopment steps, because you can't spend any accrual on anything that's not in that development plan. Third thing is, you, you might have, uh, nominal costs, uh, from the county level for their time, and from engineers that would maybe participate in some cost analysis for the, um, redevelopment plan. But all of this would be, I, in my opinion, at a huge discount, because we're partnering with the county that has done several of these, rather than going with, uh, a law firm or a brand-new firm that really knows nothing, uh, consultant, nothing about Buchanan. So, uh, I think it would be done at a discount, we do have some of the documents, you know, that we, we've already pulled the file, so it's not like we're starting from scratch. Uh, the one biggest point, though, is that there's nothing in the, uh, bank until you have time, so you have to accrue. So, really, the effectiveness of a DDA doesn't really come until year five, you know, or, um, where you start to build accrual. So again, once again, it's a long-term investment, it's a tool in the toolbox. Certainly, I think that it would have to dovetail into our already established momentum of Main Street, uh, Live Buchanan. And so, that's really my report tonight, uh, if you have any questions, I, I can follow up, but, um, that's the path I see.
I brought Tim some paperwork, and I know you've obviously seen it. Um, according to that paperwork, the DDA was never technically legally disbanded, because of, um, things that weren't done by the clerk at the time. Um, and it's the same lawyer that we have now, so a lot of what you saying, if it was never legally disbanded, could be bypassed. And, as long as I've got the floor, two and three of your little list could be done while you're doing number one. So it's not like we have to wait five months to start getting it organized and start putting it together, because we will have a DDA. So I mean, we can do them things consist, consecutively, or together, rather, rather than wait for one to start doing the other. And I really want to know if the DDA was actually disbanded, 'cause that's gonna change everything if it wasn't.
So I, I can answer that, I mean, the commission saw, uh, back when Cameron was on with us, we sought a third-party opinion outside of our existing legal counsel, Barnes and Thornburg out of Grand Rapids, uh, Scott Dines, who's, uh, he actually just got an award for zoning law lawyer of the year, top lawyer, or something like, I just saw it. Um, they were the third-party firm that did the review, and they certified that it was done.
I have all that paperwork.
Well, it wasn't allowed to be released, unfortunately.
There was no notice to make it a legal hearing, there was no notice for the legal hearing. There was not two weeks' notice for the legal hearing, and that's my only question.
I mean, I, you and I talked before the meeting, I basically told you what Patrick said, that every time I, I have been, uh, the information I have confirmed is always that the opinion we got is the DDA is dissolved. If we wanna reinstate it, this is what we have to do.
I would like to ask the lawyer again, if he's got it on file, so I can see a letter, I wanna see a letter, saying it was disbanded.
I can't.
From Dines?
Because that, we're not gonna have.
Oh, it's been over a year.
If it's been over a year, and I'm not privy to attorney-client privilege unless specified, so.
Yeah, I mean, the attorney firm was Barnes and Thornburg.
I do have the notices, though. I've pulled before from, um, when Cameron was on, I, I, I can pull my files.
We have the same lawyer, even though he switched firms.
No, it's a different lawyer.
No, it's a difference, Scott's with somebody else, yeah.
Different, different lawyer, different firm, actually, this was, I think this was before we hired.
Was about twenty twenty.
We had let go of Ra- Rock, I think was his name, right when I got on. We were in, this was in the middle of happening already, when they subcontracted, uh, Barnes and Thornburg as a third-party. And then we were simultaneously putting out for bid through RFP, uh, which I think Barnes was one of the respondents. Um, but ultimately, we went with Cots, who now is Butzel with us, our current firm. So Barnes was just a third-party, uh, very large, very good, well-respected law firm that bid it, and, but they were the one that gave the specific opinion on the DDA, and the attorney that did it, his name is Scott Dines, he's a specialist in zoning law.
There was an opposing view, and.
I can try and see what I have in the files, if there's something back there.
Is there records of our city hall meetings?
I know that, so, and it's been a while since I pulled this, but I know I do have the notices, and I remember what you're talking about, because there was a date that was wrong.
Right.
But they were republished in the time that our charter.
So they did, that's all I need to know, if they had another meeting and did the, followed the protocol, everything I'm saying is wrong.
She followed. Is she, uh, she published the first notice with an error.
Right.
On the date, but she went back and published again, and I know I have that notice, I can get it.
That's all I need to know.
I wish we still had, that would be great.
Well, I mean.
Being that I'm the only one still on the commission from that time period, I might actually have something as well.
Yeah.
I know I have that, though, I could easily get it.
I mean, you know how I am, I, I trust everybody, yeah.
I, no, I will.
Let me show me in writing.
I will pull it for you and make a copy for you, okay?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Cal, I've got it.
Thank you.
I, I guess, yeah, on Rich.
We don't have anything else.
Keep moving forward with the, and to give us the options, so we can make a decision on which way we wanna go, is how I see it.
Do we need to make a motion to tell him specifically?
I don't think so, 'cause we don't, we don't have any costs or anything, you know, he's gotta put all that together for us.
Yeah, but I was told that we hadn't told him yet, and I thought we had told him.
Yeah, we had instructed him to get to this point where he's at today.
Pursuing options for us.
So we're specifically telling him to move forward.
Mm-hmm, no, move forward with continuing to research it, so he can bring us something to vote on, right now, we don't have it.
We're not going backwards, we're going forward.
No, I, I think the collective agrees, it, it's vi- it's viable, and we need to find a, a good option.
I just wanted to be in the notes that we specifically asked to move forward with the DDA, in whatever way we need to.
Okay, good?
I'm good.
Alright, moving on to unfinished business, uh, the special meeting on September sixth, uh, two thousand twenty-four, the city commission interviewed three applicants, Tony Hauser, Scott King, and Raquel George. The commission will now consider appointing one of the applicants to fill the remaining commissioner seat, which ends in December of two thousand and twenty-six.
I'll move to appoint Raquel George to city commission for the term ending in December of two thousand and twenty-six.
Do we have support?
This is money, I'll support.
Discussion?
I, I don't know, I don't have anything else to say, I don't have anything to say.
No, I'm good, I made my motion.
Okay, roll call, please.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Come on, Raquel, come join us to get sworn in.
Come on up. You're gonna raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear our bird eye will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and I will faithfully discharge duties of office of city commissioner in and for the city of Buchanan, county of Bering, and state of Michigan, according to the best of my ability.
I do.
You're sworn in.
Thank you, St. Joe.
That's your seat now.
That's your seat.
We'll bring you up to speed. Is she officially on at, at this meeting?
Well, she was just sworn in, so.
She's the commissioner.
It's just like November when we get sworn in, yeah.
Have a seat, I don't bite.
It's only a period for about the first year.
So how does, I wouldn't even think she would be on till the next meeting, so.
Uh, well, now that I swore in, I don't know if I'm gonna swear in till that, it's like.
But she's sworn in, she's.
Yeah, I'm the only one that works.
Thank you.
So, so, since you haven't had a chance to review anything, if you feel like you wanna vote, feel free to vote, but you may wanna consider abstaining on some of these, since you're not up to speed yet, just to be, probably, you haven't got a packet or anything to look at, so, but welcome.
Welcome. Alright, moving on, uh, new business expenditures, consider approving the expenditures of September ninth, two thousand twenty-four, in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-four cents.
So I'll move to.
I really wanna thank the commission, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, it's.
Jump in.
I really wanna thank the commission for separating us from the consent calendar, because it makes us all look at it. You know, Tim and I kinda jabber back and forth, couple minutes here and there, the only question I have for you tonight, Tim, is, are we gonna be in a new DPW building soon?
Yes.
Okay.
We were hoping to be in there by the end of September, they've got some issues with, uh, some mechanical code, and we're moving our stuff in there, they're already in there working, and I expect to be in there probably in October.
Do you know when we're gonna get our wood stove? Are we gonna get the wood stove?
We're, we are working through that now, they're gonna pour a cement pad, and then we're gonna get prices and come back. We gotta wait, we're waiting for the, uh, contingency fund to see how much we have, so we can cover it all inside the building.
Okay.
And then in my discussions with, with him, is that the efficiency, because we have the heated floor, I don't know if Niles has the heated floor as well.
No, they didn't.
So we've got a double whammy of efficiency.
We're waiting on some pricing to see where we're at on our budget.
Okay, well then, can we just not pour a, a pad for it now, if we're gonna wait to get a stove? I mean, are we gonna wait a year to get a stove?
No, we're pouring the pad now, we're gonna get the stove hopefully here in the next month or so.
Oh, well, fantastic.
Yeah, we want it in operation this winter.
You know, in your spare time, and I know, Mike, you're very busy, please go, um, please go check Niles out, Mike.
Yeah, I've been there.
You have been over there and talked to him?
Oh, yeah.
They've got a very good setup system, for sure, and they've been doing it since two thousand eight.
Different types of stoves.
I think yours is gonna be bigger, from, from what it sounds like.
It's designed differently than theirs, theirs is absolutely a giant, tall, huge thing, mine is not as tall, so I, I don't know that putting it in the ground four feet is a good idea for us, and we have the water table to fight with.
Oh, yeah, 'cause two feet down.
That makes sense.
We, we can't really dig a.
Okay, but there were several other things that, you know, they tweaked, it is a boiler, it's just a wood boiler.
They don't, they don't have, uh, the, the heated floors, so ours will be completely different setup, because we will mainly use the floor heat and not the overhead registers.
And how long have they had it, Mike?
They, they're on number two, so they bought a second one, bigger, um, ours should be more manageable in this, this, 'cause we have all the zones, and it will work right, theirs doesn't work as efficiently as ours will.
And I'm just saying that as point of reference, 'cause I mean, over time, and I'm sure they found efficiencies in the building and the production of units, right?
Right, but I mean, you know, the thing about it is, is he also said, they have a much bigger building, and their gas bill is substantially higher, I believe, isn't it? Well, we got a new building, so we don't know what their gas bill is compared to ours.
I have no idea what my.
He said he could.
More efficient.
He said, he said he could buy a new stove every year and still break even.
Right, one hundred percent.
That's my whole point.
That's, we are, once we go onboard with a log boiler, we should be.
And then they cut, they have everybody that wants to dump wood, cut wood to specs.
Yep, well.
And they can dump it off, so we don't have to worry about cutting our wood.
Alright.
Alright, that's, I just wanted to make it perfectly clear, Tim, so, you know, it's gonna, October's pretty short.
Yeah, it is.
So it's gonna be hard and fast learning how to make it work.
Hopefully, you can hold on the top and put wood in there, they keep burning, that's what my old is.
Yeah, but then you got the human factor, screwing that machine up. They put a three-quarter inch plate of steel in front of theirs.
Alright, alright.
You good?
I'm good.
I'll move to approve expenditures as presented.
Is there support?
I'll support.
Roll call, please.
Weeden?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
And George?
Yeah, so just to let her know that you abstain.
I got you.
For lack of review or something like that.
Uh, next on the agenda, SMAC is Special Assessment, uh, discussion of the establishment of the Special Assessment District for the Emergency Medical Services, and consider resolution two thousand twenty-four dot zero nine slash two four, a resolution of intent to form a Special Assessment District.
Okay, so, that time of year again, um, looking at establishing for five years for a Special Assessment District, this is mainly just giving you the breakdown of what we're gonna start with first, going to the thirty, then the forty-five, and then fifty dollars a year, fifty dollars a year after that. Uh, this is just creating the district, the district as a whole is the city of Buchanan, uh, then the next step would be the public hearing at the next meeting, a second resolution at the third meeting, a final public hearing at the fourth meeting. So this is just your first step, establishing the district, and letting the public know.
Are the costs going up, or?
So they're going from what they gave us two years ago, at the thirty dollars, and me and Mindy ran, we did run some numbers, because they're not going by parcel anymore, they're going by population, is what you saw in your packet, kind of how it's going. Um, hopefully, in their staying, there's a lot of different things going on with SMAC is right now, between maybe a possible merger and the talks, and then the two other ones coming in, um, but we're going with what we had before.
So do we need to, are we gonna have to make a general fund payment?
So we will, if we don't go through this, that last meeting, I believe it's, um, October, uh, we were told by the county that we had to have everything in by October twenty-third at the latest, so you guys would be finished on October twenty-first, if you went through with the whole special assessment.
And then the taxpayers would see it on their January bill, or not January?
Yep, yep.
And we ate this last year, while we waited for SMAC is to do.
I remember.
We made a mistake last year, by, by waiting.
Well, I mean, we were putting the, the heat on SMAC is to get their ship cleaned up, ship with a P.
With a P.
And a X.
And they, and they, and they've done a pretty good job of getting that squared away, so.
Yeah.
Um, I would move to approve resolution twenty, twenty-four, point oh nine slash twenty-four as presented.
Do you have support?
I'll support.
Yeah, and I just, uh, asked Cal to ask them one question, I mean, we have to keep moving for this legislatively, but I noticed that two non-owners were paying the same rate as the owners, in Milton and, um, Pokagan. I think Milton represents a six percent share, and Pokagan was like a one percent share, but nonetheless, I don't know if they paid in in the past, how it works, but they're not an owner, and they don't have any voting rights, so, just if they could give clarification on why they pay. Just if they could give clarification on why they pay the same rate.
I will get clarification on you for that, but I believe they pay a higher rate, 'cause they're contracted in.
Yep.
If I remember correctly. Sorry, that just came to me.
I just did the amount of population versus the amount of payment on their spreadsheet. It's exactly the same, so.
And it's coming back. I will get that answer for it.
I appreciate it.
And I'll send an email to the commission.
Are you on that committee?
Yes.
So we have somebody on the committee?
We do, but we are gonna have to reevaluate. This is kind of off topic. We will have to reevaluate boards.
Right.
We'll do that in November, though.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Let's hold off until November, until after the election, and then everybody can decide then.
You're gonna wait till the election?
All right. Very good. Uh, next on the agenda, city hall parking lot repair and resealing. Consider approving city hall park.
Did we vote?
Did we vote?
I don't think we voted.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, roll, roll call, please. My apologies.
Oh, sorry, my bad. Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Uh, yes.
George? Whedon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, now moving on. Uh, city hall parking lot repair and resealing. Consider approving city hall parking lot repair and resealing.
Okay, you have before you a couple of quotes on, uh, to address some much-needed maintenance in our parking lot outside here. Uh, the scope of work includes the asphalt resealing, including some spot patching and parking line striping, and we got two incredibly close quotes with, uh, one of them, the, the second quote, did not include the striping. They estimated that at about three hundred dollars. So I would recommend the commission approve the Schenbiger asphalt ceiling, uh, quote for five thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, the low bidder.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve five thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars for reasphalting the city parking lot, city hall parking lot.
Very good. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Roll call, please.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, and at this time, uh, we will be going into closed session. Uh, consider entering a closed session pursuant to MCL fifteen dot two six eight, section eight, one C, for discussions relating to the negotiation of collective bargaining agreements. I will take a motion to enter closed session.
So I'll move to enter closed session pursuant to MCL fifteen dot two six eight, section eight, one C, discussions relating negotiation of collective bargaining agreements.
Do I have support?
This is money I'll support.
Roll call, please.
Swem?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yep.
George?
Yes.
We're in closed session.
No, they're already opposed, sorry.
Too late. Sorry, Jerry.
We'll be quick, Jared.
It's only gonna take us five minutes back to Jerry.
She is.
Right. It's the. They have a moisture. So when you. Can we really have to do. Find. We got.
We know. Look. Wanderers. Wanderers.
Yeah. But I also don't have. Two of us people. I don't have. But. I. This. I don't have. Like that. Yeah. We got it. That. Just that house.
All. I. I.
Well, on the side of the party.
I said, I've been. I do. Going on. Back. Ever. Then.
That's your. I mean. Was that. I just. This. That. It's. Deep. There. There's. There's. How many. Those. Certain.
I know.
I mean.
I'm.
Two. Five. You're.
I know. I don't. I don't have any. Yeah. It's. Yes.
Oh, we're like that. Guys.
I'm. Today. It's. I have. They all.
Yeah. Definitely. It's all across.
Well, this is. It's.
Yeah. That's.
It's. Well, you know, it's. I.
So. So we're. Be careful. You want to. Sure.
Well, I want. Now.
All right.
I'm.
Okay. It's a circa forty. So. Fred. That's a forty. Sorry.
Rick didn't care. He doesn't.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. I.
All right, Jerry. Sorry. Maybe I shouldn't have put you at the end.
Dan hit the restroom on his way out?
Uh, must've.
What day?
All right. Door open.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay. Take a motion to re-enter open session.
This is money I'll move to re-enter our open session. I'll second.
And roll call, please.
Whedon. Whedon.
Yeah.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Swem.
Yes.
George.
Nope.
Yes.
You're in open.
Thank you very much. Uh, I will take a motion. Um, for a closed session.
I'm moved to approve the police union contract effective July first, twenty twenty-four.
Do we have support?
This is money I'll support.
Roll call, please.
Bianski.
Yep.
Money.
Yes.
Swem.
Yes.
George. Whedon.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Uh, next on the agenda, McCoy Creek Trail Trek and Treat Event will be held on September Saturday, October twenty-sixth at twelve thirty to two P M.
Jerry's got just a couple of comments.
Bring candy.
Yes.
Yeah.
First of all, congratulations. Um, yeah, we're having, uh, a trick or treat on the trail again, October twenty-sixth. Last year, we had about eight hundred kids and about seven hundred adults that went through. We probably. It, and it all depends on the weather. I mean, we've had events with rain or shine. They come through, um, see an awful lot of Indiana plates, and that's fine. Uh, we're here just for the kids to have a good time. However, candy has gone up a ton, and I'm not asking for any money from the city commission. I was gonna ask for money from the public, but they're gone. No, that's all.
I'm sure you hit the rumor before we. While we were going, did you not?
Yeah. Um, but I will tell you that last year, we spent about twenty-two hundred dollars on candy. And it's gone up significantly. So if you know of a group, if you know of a company, I've already secured about eight hundred dollars. Um, but I will be going after quite a bit more. Uh, try to fully fund it without using the trail funds. We do have money in there for that. Um, in the, um, maintenance fund, but we don't like spending it if we don't have to. So if you know a group, a bank, a credit union, whatever, please either let me know or.
Real estate office.
And, um. There you go. Got our first one already, so. Yeah. We also are gonna need volunteers. Uh, it takes about. Um, about twenty volunteers. It takes, last year, we had twenty-six characters. Uh, witches and goblins and bears and all kinds of good stuff. Um, please pass the word that no dogs are allowed. Last year, we had a couple, about five dogs try to come through. Um, of course, they're always good dogs, and they're not gonna bite anybody. But you can just imagine a, a five-year-old kid with a gorilla mask on approaches a dog, and the dog doesn't understand what's going on. So unless it's a, um, special dog, we will not allow any dogs in. Last year, we had somebody hide one in a blanket and brought it through, and it happened to be a pit bull, so. Um, nothing against pit bulls.
Right.
So anyhow, we've already, um, worked with the, uh, police. They're gonna assist us with parking. Parking will be at the Clark Lab. There's probably three to four hundred parking spots there and at Edgewater. And all around that area, so, um. Yes, that'll do it.
Very good. Thank you, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry.
Appreciate it. All right. Uh, next up, public comments for non-agenda items. Please keep it to three minutes and state your name for the record.
Transfers and leniency, it's kind of on the, the, the docket. First, I'd like to congratulate you. It's, uh, really good to see a young person up there and being involved with the community. Um, you do deserve it, so, and thanks to everybody for your consideration. I know it was there. Um, I understand why you made the decision you did, and, um, I brought my daughter tonight not because I thought I was gonna win, but we had the discussion when we came here that there was a possibility that her dad was gonna lose and hopefully to a good person. And, uh, I wanted her to understand that that's what happens sometimes in life. That sometimes you don't make it, and you just gotta continue to go on, continue to do the work you're here to do, and continue to do the work I do every day. But it is election time, and so I am on a ballot. And you. You two remember that because I'm coming out. Of course. Now, I can't say that I'm not a little upset, but I'm coming for you, so. And, 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 and good, and good jest, you know. I, I would like to say that I, if you two or any one of the three of us make it up there after this election, I will be a happy person, so, but I still can't back down.
All right. Thanks, Tony. Appreciate it. Okay, uh, now we'll move on to executive comments. Uh, Tim?
Oh, sure. Uh, I'll be brief. Uh, we met with our finance committee and the auditors a couple of weeks ago, and we, we all have our marching orders to complete our financial audit. We developed a timeline and plan to present the F Y twenty twenty-three, twenty-four audit in November. I did receive correspondence from Eagle that we are still in the running for a grant submitted in January by myself and Mike Baker relating to locating and identifying lead service lines. I will be submitting requested information this week to further enhance our ability to get that funding. And lastly, I'd like to thank the commission for approving the police union agreement and recognizing the honorable and important work our officers and Chief Burnett perform on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Very good. Uh, move on to commissioner comments. Mr. Bianski.
I just wanna welcome Raquel. Um. We've got a new face on this commission, and I hope it goes a little smoother than it was. That's it.
Very good. Mr. Money.
Yeah, I too wanna say congratul- congratulations to Raquel, Raquel. I'll get it all straight. Um. I'm quite sure you'll do a, a great job. I made this comment before. A lot of the people weren't sitting here. Out of all of the turmoil and everything else we had going on here for months, we only had three people that stepped up to the plate. And to me, that was a little. Disheartening because, uh, I, I thought there would be a lot more congrat- uh, you know, and I know Tony, uh, is sincere in his, uh, approach to the city. I'm not sure about Mr. King, but like I said, once again, congratulations to Raquel, Raquel. I don't know if anybody's been down, uh, to look at the new D P W building, but it is looking great. Uh, uh, they've done a, a great job down there. And it's a, uh, something that we can be proud of. So, uh, with that being said, thanks, Mike, and every, and this commission for doing everything that we've done down there. Uh, congratulations to Chunks. Uh, keep up the good work, um, you know. Uh, quite sure we're all appreciative of a good ice cream shop here in Buchanan, and I know I am. I know, and, uh, there's a few other people in this place that frequent quite often, so. You know. You're the one.